Agents, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance.
Here.
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 Why do you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, this meeting's being held on May 12th, 2025 in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And notices of this meeting have been provided via the email to the Press of Atlantic City, The Daily Journal on November 9th, 2024, as well as been posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board and website at thebunaburrow.org. Okay, I'd like to lead off by saying that we are now into, I believe, our fourth month of the year that we have Quinn Broadcasting doing one meeting a month. And this is due in part to sponsors who contribute to that cause and businesses. Allen Associates, we were fortunate enough that they took the lead and they have been providing dollars to televise this meeting. And I have gone out and gotten other sponsors to support this. I talked to Council President Adams and he said I should call Mr. Quinn and really recognize the other sponsors that are letting this take place. So this month's meeting is being sponsored by Newfield Bank, Newfield National Bank. Pity Capizola, a lifelong resident, lives in Valen now, actually came to me and said he would be willing to support this endeavor. And it's very much appreciated that Newfield Bank, along with the other ones, are sponsoring these live telecasts. And then, as you know, they're run time and time again for the rest of the month. So this month, we had to do the first meeting because the second meeting involves a conflict with the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. So that's why Quinn Broadcasting's with us tonight and we welcome them. Speaking of Pity Capizola, in my conversations with him, I learned that his father, made Buna Borough history a number of years ago, 1949, serving as the first police chief. I didn't know that.
We had a part-time police department. He was the first police.
He was the first police chief. So in saying that, he showed me a picture of his father's force at that time. And then I went in there to visit him on some financial matters and I saw a portrait that his sister-in-law had had of his father. And I asked him after learning this that I'd really like to see that portrait hung up with a lot of the people behind me tonight that made their mark and also the mayor's corner over there. And he was really humbled and thankful. So I got in touch with each council member on my own and they all endorsed that idea of having Mr. Angelo Capizola placed up on the wall behind us. So that will take place at the next council meeting, which will be on a Tuesday, May 27. That will take place, Pity along with a couple of his brothers will be here and it should be a real nice night. And speaking with that, I talked to all council, Councilman Jovanati the other day and Councilwoman Ann Delora, and we thought it would be apropos too. And I talked to Council President Adams this morning that what we would do to make some room is take the two mayors that are behind me, Mr. Danini and Mr. Muccio, and put them where it belongs with the mayors that are sitting over there.
And a timeline.
And a timeline. So we would talk to Bill and his department if we can get, Bill Danini, of course, would be first. The next two are right in line and then Muccio would be where Mayor Perella was. And then we would just move down the line because the progression, that's the way it was. So that's something we're going to initiate for the next council meeting. Again, Mr. Capizola will be up here. It'd be nice to have all the police department on one side and we will give it some direction that way of how that'll line up. So that's forthcoming at the next council meeting. And I thank council for taking that in consideration. Again, the Capizola family is rich in history of our borough and deservedly will have Angelo up there. I know him very well, school Pity and good man. Next, we have Resolution 94-25. This is a resolution appointing Ken Barbagley to the position of Borough Municipal Authorities' Member to fill the unexpired term of Jeffrey Johnson.
Motion.
Motion Adams, Second Alvarez. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, we have Ken here tonight. I'd like to have him come up to get sworn in to this regular position now. Just for everyone's knowledge out there, Ken not only serves on this board, he serves as our Bunaburrow Fire Chief since the inception last year. And I have to tell you, and the Director of Public Safety and Council President will tell you, that he does an excellent job in that capacity. We, for the first time, are really moving forward with our department since last year. We're getting
New equipment.
New equipment, new members, and that's all due to Ken's hard work. So Ken, I'd like to publicly thank you behalf, not only Doug and I, but the entire council for all your efforts and taking this position on with your busy schedule to give some of your expertise to the BBMUA board. So I'd like to have you come up.
George will be in my
Because it would probably burn in your hand.
Put your left hand on there and your right hand up, Ken, and repeat after me, please. I, Kenneth Barbagley,
I, Kenneth Barbagley.
Do solemnly swear
Sowlandly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear
I will bear
True faith
True faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the governments
And their governments.
Established in the United States
Established in the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority
Under the authority.
Of the people
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially
I will impartially.
And justly
And justly.
Perform
Perform.
All the duties
All the duties.
Of the office
Of the office.
Of Municipal Utilities Authority Member
Municipal Utility Authorities.
According to the best of my ability
According to my best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Kenny. Sign it here in front of the professionals. That was tough.
It's got to be the fire chief. Yes, they have meetings on Monday night and that's another thing they do. It's open for applications. So anybody in Bunaburrow that would like to pursue firefighting, they have their meeting nights on Monday and they're open house for applications. From there, it's screened by Ken and the committee of his fire commissioners through the public safety director, and we encourage anybody that'd like to come out and volunteer for that purpose. Okay, my report, it's going to be a little bit lengthy tonight. I was absent last meeting. So I have a month's worth of work here. So please just bear with me. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I condensed my notes and pages. But again, this is stuff that the council has to be aware of. A lot of them are already aware of a lot of things, but so does the public have to know where their tax dollars are going. And this is what we're here to do. So here I go. The first item, it's going to relate to a resolution, believe it or not, that's on the agenda regarding the I-Bank of New Jersey. I just want to give council and the public a little briefing on this. We received a letter on Friday from Mr. de Blasio and Joe that the NJDEP with Carrick Cole, Chief of the Borough Bureau of Environmental Permitting, authorized the borough to go out to bid for this $3 million joint venture with the BBMUA and Bunaburrow for sanitary line improvements and reconstruction of roads. With this, this will bring nearly $3 million to this borough. We made history with this, with this joint effort with the BBMUA. And I'm just proud that I can say this tonight because it's a major achievement for any town. So again, I want to thank the BBMUA Authority personally. We have the chairman here tonight and member, De Remy O'Gerry Marinachi, for their cooperation and for their leadership on the board to be doing these joint projects for the benefit of the entire borough. Just for the public's knowledge, the roads that will be improved and sewer line extensions will be to Summer Road or Summer Avenue on Route 40, going down to Plymouth Road and West Avenue in Minnetola from Wheat Road all the way to Summer Avenue. So again, with that being said, I'll go to the agenda and pick it up where it should be on Resolution 102-25. This is a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to advertise for bids to be received for the FY 2025 NJ Water Bank Number S340519-01 sanitary sewer improvements.
Motion.
Motion Alvarez. Second Barsoya. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, now we go to page two of the agenda. Again, I have a briefing for the council and for the public on what's transpiring these next two resolutions. I wanted to update the council on a meeting that took place on May 8th at the city of Valen in the mayor's office regarding gathering information on closing our landfill. Mayor Farnucci, along with Council President Paul Spinelli and some consultants, were there regarding solar energy. Myself, Councilwoman Ann Delora, Streets and Road Supervisor Bill Nimahey, were in attendance from the borough. The Valen mayor outlined a host of positive points regarding solar energy and what New Jersey has to offer. They just finished themselves a closure not long ago and are very happy with the solar power and financial benefits that it brings to them right now. After hearing and reviewing this information, I asked if the Mazoni property on the boulevard, which is approximately one acre, and the Commerce Center property on this side of the boulevard would qualify for this type of brownfield improvement. They said being brownfield sites, they would qualify, however, they would need a resolution to deem that area redevelopment. The good news is the Commerce Center already is in need of redevelopment and solar is included. Last year, we were looking at possibly, I had some, a group of people come to me about putting a sports complex and that really never came to fruition due to whatever, it's very, would have been, I guess, pretty costly because it's a brownfield site and it has a lot of hotspots on it. And they would have to really be careful with a lot of things. So moving forward and to try to generate some extra revenue for this borough, I think it would behoove us to move and act on that property, the Mazoni property, and definitely the landfill. Bill worked up an estimate of about 19 to 20 acres in total that we could get for solar energy on these properties. So with that being said, when I talked to Councilwoman Ann Delora, she, we thought we'd bring this up to Borough Council and I put it on the agenda because the first step is to deem the landfill in need of redevelopment and the Mazoni property. We don't have to worry about the Commerce Center because it's already there. I'm letting council know that's only step one. After we do that and we pass the resolutions, this will go to the land use board in June for their review. They would have to hold, I believe, a public hearing. It's a process for this redevelopment and Joe, you're probably very familiar with that. So we have to go through that exercise in order to get to the point we want to even entertain solar. So once they're done that in June, that would be turned back to council in July because the final ball and the final decisions are made here, as you know. And then you guys would endorse that concept to go for redevelopment and that will enable me and anybody I put in my committee to negotiate with the solar companies, specifically the ones that deal with government. That's the one we're going for because there's monies. There's dollars. They're going to make money and we're going to make money. We're going to take a land that is really of no use and putting some value in it as far as getting a return to our taxpayers. And isn't that what it's all about? Secondly, it will save us, and I asked this question to the mayor, they help with your landfill closure costs. So any money that we banked, I told you, we have money banked for this or my administration didn't, but previous ones did because eventually this landfill has to close. If we get them to initiate the dollars through the DEP and all that and get it closed, then we have money that we can take for other use of this borough and we could prioritize that, George, in future budgets. So I thought that was a very attractive offer. So again, I want to thank Pat and Bill for being in attendance. They came with a lot of information that we were, you know, sharing with them and asking a lot of questions. We had a great dialogue and now here we are to tonight, presented to the full council and asking you to pass these resolutions. So let me go back to the agenda on page two. The next resolution is number 95-25. This is a resolution of the Borough Buena, County of Atlantic, authorizing the preliminary investigation to be made by the land use board to determine whether the area consisting of Block 120, Lot 5, 300 Sumner Road is in need of redevelopment in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A-1ETSQ. Motion Ann Delora. Second Barsoya, also known as the landfill property, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. Very good point, Council President. Also known as the landfill property. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, next would be Resolution 96-25. This is a resolution of the Borough Buena, County of Atlantic, authorizing the preliminary investigation to be made by the land use board to determine whether the area consisting of Block 133, Lot 5, 502 Northwest Boulevard is in need of redevelopment in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A-1ETSQ. Also known as a Mazoni prop, also known as the Mazoni property. Motion Barsoya.
Second.
Second Ann Delora. Any comments? Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 I'd like to thank the council for that endorsement of moving forward with this project. Okay, number four. I have some correspondence I'm going to read to the council. I had Nicole give you some copies today and I want to make a public for the public knowledge. I had an email sent from the county to me and it was regarding Summer Avenue. And if you recall, myself, again, Bill, we met last year with the county administrator, the head county engineer regarding the poor drainage problems on Summer Avenue that borders Brewster Road and the couple homes, when it rains heavily, get flooded out each and every time. So the county administrator gave me an update. He said there are two proposals for designing this drainage. They are being reviewed at this time and an award will be made and the design will move forward. We will get back with perimeters when the design team is on board. So that was an update to something that we initiated last spring about this time. So it's about a year, but it's something. Secondly, he gave an update on Brewster Road. Our staff did the design. The cost was projected to be twice the estimated cost. The design is being reviewed to determine what caused the higher cost and to see if adjustments could be made to the design. However, this is moving along and the final design should occur shortly. If you have any questions, let me know. And again, this was from our county administrator. So I put that on file notice. A week after, no, about three weeks after I received that, I felt compelled because there was another section that I made the county aware of, along with the Streets and Road Supervisor, who actually mapped out a design on the area of Wheat Road and Lincoln Avenue. And it's not just one pothole, it's several potholes and it's getting bigger and bigger as we speak. So I'm a patient person, okay, by most part, but you know, I also have a pushing, I could get pushed so far when I'm not heard from and we are on the western end of the county and sometimes, you know, it gets frustrating because this is an intersection and I'm going to read you what I wrote to county administrator. And it was respectful, but it was very direct and I think the public and the council should know. I said, "Good morning and requesting a current status report regarding the poor condition of roadway at the intersection of Wheat Road and Lincoln Avenue. I have reported this site along with the snapshot of the area affected by my Streets and Road Supervisor, William Nimahey, over six months ago. Currently, a new Bunaburrow Connection Brewery has opened and also an auto store zone, store has opened, increasing the traffic flow even more in that area and the decay of the area getting worse by day. It's my hope that the county prioritizes this section of roadway before anything else happens public safety-wise." So it's pretty strong with the letter, but I think duly noted. Also, I did receive your correspondence in April regarding the Brewster Road project that was approved by the county executive over a year ago. And I must request that you keep up on that pothole situation as that continues to decline rapidly. Thank you for your time and attention to these concerns, Mayor Barupi." Again, you know, the county has done a lot of good work here and this is not a bashing of Atlantic County. Trust me, I've had a great relationship with them. They've done many great things here in Bunaburrow. But when you're in this seat, and again, I have much more time now because I'm retired and I travel this borough quite a bit every day and I see the same things occurring and I see the potholes and the public safety getting even worse, I feel compelled to put them on guard and they're going to get further noticed if we don't receive some answers in the next month. So I wanted to just let the public know and you know that we're on it. So that takes care of that. Next on the agenda in council was, and I want to thank Nicole today and Mary Ann. Today was really a pain. I got a lot of last minute information in and I had them run a copies for council and giving all kinds of that and all, but we need to know what's happening here. And the next item I have to report on is the Minnetola Estates project, which, by the way, started in the mid 2005, 2006. Council has received in their packets correspondence that was sent today to Einhorn Construction LLC, putting them on notice that the borough's demand that the borough's demand of the remaining work to be completed be so done in the next 30 days. The work that's not completed to date is as follows. Final paving of the street. Installation of street signs. Installation of street lights. Planning of street trees. Planning of pine trees. Installation of split rail fence and the striping of the road. This has been going on way too long and some resolutions were done in 2006 and 2008. Therefore, after the 30 days, the borough will pursue first indemnity of the American Insurance Company for the completion of the remaining of this work. Okay, so they've been put on notice. They have 30 days. This was sent out today, special mail by Special Counsel Mike Malinsky, that the borough retained with a follow-up email by me as mayor to officially put them on notice. Enough's enough. The people who live on this street and development deserve much better than what they've been getting. So for everyone's knowledge, it's locked in, it's on the move and I think we should be seeing some action in a very short time.
Nineteen years.
Yeah, I think that's time. So I just want to thank council. Council does have documentation of a lot of particulars with exhibits, so if anyone questions you, you're very well aware of how to respond to what we just pursued. Number six, Fire Department update. In council president's absence, he was absent for his vacation that he took, I was working with the fire chief and the fire consultant on some items. I briefed him, we met this morning on some of the updates and I want to brief council and the public to them. A used command vehicle has been purchased, the check has been written out and we'll be getting it in tomorrow. The chief had to leave, but he's had one of the older vehicles that was left by Minnetola. There was one older one by Landisville. They're really not in real good shape. Again, this man goes, he leaves his business. When that fire whistle blows, he's the first one on the scene. So the director and I felt compelled and the finance chairman, he was consulted, that we get this vehicle for him. So it should be in tomorrow. And what we're going to do with the older, the vehicle he now uses is we're going to keep it for inspections during the day. If our inspections department need to use it, they can use that vehicle. And at night, we're keeping it for some of his firefighters that have to go to classes outside the borough. So we're going to be sharing that. I talked to Ken, I talked to the director, we're on board with that. And we're looking to probably the white, older vehicle. The director's been in touch with the rescue squad and we're looking maybe to send that off to them because the new EMS chief is looking to try to get to the scenes prior to the vehicle also and he'd like to have that as a backup. And really, that's sitting in the fire department's lot, really not making any use. It's older, it has problems, but it's something that, you know, the director and I feel that we could give the EMS for a little extra support. So we're moving in that vein. So we're moving in that vein. Also, the new brush truck will be arriving soon with the consent of this body and council. They felt, you know, that we went out and used some startup money on our fire end part, and we did go out and bond. And that bond, I think I just read, George, is going to be coming through on May 15th. So hopefully, the next council meeting, we'll have the check to buy that new truck. Kenny said it's already ready, it's already outfitted for the borough. And that really isn't just a brush truck, you know, again, I'm trying to get educated with this fire department. This is going to be a smaller version of a big fire truck that has all the bells and whistles and can go there and get a fire, you know, really contain a fire before the bigger trucks get there. So they have some real good plans to utilize this vehicle, and we look forward to having that come to Buna Borough. The last thing with public safety, next to the last thing, we are going to have a public safety committee meeting with the fire chief and the consultant TJ next week to be discussing upgrades within that department, too, and we'll report back to council. Hopefully, the director will have a report at the end of the month at that meeting. Lastly, regarding the fire department, I attended a training this past Saturday regarding fighting fires with foam. Chief Bart Bagley invited a company that specializes in a special type of preventative measure to dive fires out. It's called Encapsulator T500, was the presenter, this guy presented his product. The foam seems to be an outdated way of fighting fires. They've, where it causes certain types of cancer, could. So this is a new method about, one of the guys were from Galloway Township, one of the chiefs, they use it, along with like four other fire companies in Atlantic County. He showed us a video, and then he actually went outside, and they demonstrated how this particular chemical, I mean, it's clean, it's fast, and it's safe. So I told Ken to work out, work up an estimate from these people. They're going to give us some quotes, it'll go to the director of public safety, and he'll be probably presenting something to council at the next meeting regarding purchasing some of that fire, preventative fire, you know. It's amazing.
This is a longer shelf life.
Much longer shelf life, good point. The foam, after a year, you have to change it. This shelf life goes up to 15 years. So it's really an updated version of how we can upgrade our firefighters' potential to fight fires in a fast, quick, and expedite things really quickly. That concludes that. The next thing I had, almost done, getting there, is an update regarding Route 40, Central Avenue, and Kimberly Lane drainage update. And this came out fresh today from Assemblyman Hutchinson's office in our Legislative 4th District, and John Saban, the chief staff person who really keeps me abreast of what's going on with our infrastructure project that they committed to the state of New Jersey and Atlantic County, but this is from the state of New Jersey. He said, "Mayor, thanks for taking my call. I have an update on Route 40 drainage project, and it's below. The project is currently in the CD phase. WSP has successfully completed the drainage survey, subsurface utility engineering, and the existing drainage model. They will utilize this information to design a new drainage system at the intersection of Route 40 and Central Avenue as requested by the local officials. WSP plans to return to the field to conduct test pits where the new pipes will intersect with the existing subsurface utilities. Additionally, the pipe video company requires footage of the current system that runs from Central Avenue to Kimberly Lane. Since these pipes are owned by the borough, they will need to be secure with writ permission to film them. We are currently waiting to hear back from the WSP so that we, OCR, can coordinate with them and the borough to move forward with this. With respect to the larger Route 40 drainage project, the project is in final design as we speak. If everything goes well, the department hopes to advise the project to advertise, excuse me, advertise, like we did the MEA thing tonight, when I was in the fall, which is great news." And this was from John Sabran, chief staff of Legislative 4th District. I can't tell you, council, what this means to this area. I know they gave us all the, Bill, we had that Zoom meeting last year, they just didn't talk the talk, they're walking the walk. And I got to tell you, I've been in government 30 years. I never thought that we could get to this day where we're going to see this major drainage improvement. Thank God for those people who live in that area, all the way down to Kimberly Lane and, you know, to Brewster Road. This is huge, people, so.
For years, they've been doing that.
Yeah, for years, right, Pat? That's been problematic for many, many years. So my last note is a positive one. It's a reminder that Memorial Day services will be held at the American Legion Hall in Minnetola on May 26th at 9:00 a.m. Council, along with the public, are invited to attend this service. The Buna Regional High School band will be on hand to play a few patriotic songs, and I will deliver the keynote speech regarding the significance of Memorial Day. A brief ceremony will then take place at the Route 40 Monument in Landisville to honor those. Taps will be played at both places, and then everyone is invited back to the 270 American Legion post for hot dogs, beverages, and desserts. This has been an ongoing tradition in the borough ever since I was a little kid. The historical society, I also believe, Doug, will be displaying the pictures of the veterans within the American Legion Hall for those to view who served our country. Please try to attend, not only council, but the public, who's out there, and those in TV land. Again, you don't have to be from Buna Borough, and if you're from Buna Vista, Island, Franklin Township, if you like to come and see an old traditional service to honor those that served our country, it's really, it's short and sweet, and it's nice, but it's really nice. So I think I'm all talked out. Sorry, Doug. I know he likes to condense things a little bit more, and I tend to go on and on, but this had to be done. Okay, so we're at the public portion of the meeting. Okay, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council, please come up and, well, let me open the public portion of the meeting.
Motion.
Motion Adams?
Second.
Second, Barsoya, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 All right, now I'll go to anyone wishing to address the mayor and council. Please step forward and give your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion Adams, second Alvarez, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, next I need a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number 769. This is an ordinance amending Article 1, general provisions, Chapter 150 of land use, Article 1, application fees and required escrow deposits of the code of the borough Buna. Motion Barsoya, second. And Delora, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, just for public's knowledge, they introduced this ordinance last month. We have to wait 30 days to advertise, and now we're in a discussion period for council. Anyone have any comment on this? Anyone from the public wish to comment on ordinance number 769? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion Barsoya, second and Delora, roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 769.
Motion.
Motion Adams? Second Alvarez? Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next, we'll go to Resolution 100-25. This is a resolution of the Borough Buna, County of Atlantic, amending Resolution 38-25 to correct an error so as to provide for the extension of time to Tia Planta LLC, New Jersey, to, for the conditional municipal Class 1 cultivation license for 120 days commencing February 12, 2025, in addition to the extension for the Class 2 manufacturer license provided there within. Motion. Motion Adams? Second, Barsoya? Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, let's, here's.
Can you update us on that?
Here's what they did. We council approved their licensing, and their time was expiring. So they put in for a extension for their cultivation and their manufacturing. We approved the cultivation and manufacturing that night, but we only gave them in writing their cultivation extension. So that was pointed out from their attorney to our solicitor, and we had already approved it, so this is just reapproving it and giving them what they wanted, but we're not extending it any longer. The extension that we gave them was a four-month extension. When they requested both extensions, we approved that. Now that we're approving this one, we're not giving them another four months. We're giving until the end of that four-month extension, which is in June. So neither one of their licenses will be extended past the June deadline, which we did back in January. Confusing as mud?
So at first, we only, we approved, we thought we approved two. For him writing, it was one.
Yes. They asked for both. We did one, so now we're doing the other, but we're giving this one the same deadline as that first one. We're not going to give them different deadlines.
Did they have problems over there with the property?
Yes.
Now is that working through?
The reason that we granted that extension, if you recall, was the attorney had came to us, there's negotiations with the landlord, the owner of the property, and there's issues with soil testing. And they're in pine lands, so.
So that's what you're arguing right now?
They proved why they needed the extension. You need to prove why you request an extension. You can't just get one just because you've been lazy.
Good. Thank you.
So, yeah, Doug was in touch with Solicitor Teneta multiple times this weekend. Today, I was in touch with him also, and this is the recommendation at this point from the solicitor. So we have a motion on the floor, second, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, next, we have a resolution regarding a contract award to a roof replacement. I would like to defer to the chairperson of Public Buildings and Grounds, since she and Bill Niemehay are streets and road supervisor, did a lot of work to get to this point tonight. So, Pat, I want to defer to you just to give council, you did a good job with this, and Bill.
Let's open it first, so make a motion.
All right. Pat, you want to make a motion to?
Motion.
Motion, and Delora, second Adams on Resolution 101-25. We're in discussion, and I'm asking the council, a woman, to just give a little briefing.
Okay, Mayor, we put out for quotes, actually, it was only for half the roof this time, because we were, clearly that we wouldn't have enough money because of the plywood. We don't know how much the roof, the whole roof would need for plywood. So that's why we're doing the.
Affected area.
Affected area, which is on Route 40 side, and that's where the offices are and kitchen and so forth. Okay, and we got three quotes back, and way down for roofing, it came in at $29,700, and he also, he won the quote.
Very good.
We went to the other local one, Ashman Contractors, right here in Landisville. Theirs was $31,000, $31.75.
Okay.
And we got nothing from the third one. They never got back to us. And I believe they're not in service anymore, out of business.
Okay, Pat, all right, very good. Yeah, and this has been an ongoing process. Bill, you want to add something? Because you were involved with this heavily.
You were right, it should be $29,700, not $27,900. I think the numbers are.
Twenty-nine, seven, instead of twenty-seven, nine. Pat, this is for the.
I believe that's what it is.
It's.
Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred. On this resolution.
All right, Nicole.
It should be twenty-nine, seven hundred.
Nicole, we need to.
Just make the correction on the resolution. Twenty-nine, seven. Twenty-nine, seven. So this way, when council votes, that'll be official on the record that that's the correct amount. And, you know, that's a good price.
It is.
It's a good price. We have a local contractor in Minnetola getting the contract, who does very, very good work with roofing, so I think it's a win-win all around. And again, next year comes, Pat will be evaluating the rest of that, and probably, hopefully, we can do the remainder next year.
And the money is in place.
And the money, she got the certificate of availability, she was given that, so councils, our next step is to.
Where'd you find that money at?
Easy.
Very good.
Where'd you find that money at?
Yeah, she found it.
It's been there.
It's been there.
I hit it.
We didn't. We didn't feel it, so it doesn't hurt us.
You can't touch it, George. All right, roll call vote on Resolution 101-25.
Yes.
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 Again, I want to thank you again, Pat.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we go out of, yes, thank you, Patty, we go out of order. Can we address Resolution 99-25?
Sure.
It's on the second to last page.
Yeah, we had resolution put on tonight, and Doug and I agreed with this, too, about going into a closed session to discuss a matter, but.
I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this yet. I think I need to do a little bit more investigating, so if we could hold it off maybe till next meeting, I would appreciate that.
So you want to make a motion to table Resolution 99-25, council president?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Adams, second by Andy Laura, to table Resolution 99-25. Roll call vote, Nicole?
Yes.
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 Thank you, council.
Very good. All right, next we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes items of business which are not controversial and do not require individual discussions. A motion approving the consent agenda is moved, seconded, and voted upon one item at a time by the borough council. If any discussion is requested on a consent agenda item, it is removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. So we're going to have a couple tonight. Resolution 97-25. This is a resolution accepting the change order to amend a contract with Compre Construction Company Incorporated for Atlantic County Improvement Authority Development Block Grant CDBG for the ADA accessibility improvements to various municipal buildings. The next is Resolution 98-25. This is a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund a construction permit overpayment in an amount of $40 to Royalty Property Holdings LLC. The next on the agenda center, it would be the bills paid as listed. And lastly, we have the clerk's report, minutes of the special meeting, April 14, 2025, and minutes of the April meeting, 28, 2025. Motion. Motion Adams? Second, Barsoya? Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next, we have solicitor report. Mr. Teneta's absent tonight. You have anything? Okay, Alan, thank you. Hello, Alan. Next, we'll go to engineer's report. Mr. Monak?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding grant applications, we have two grant applications due July 1st, so we will be applying for both of those. That's the 2025 Local Transportation Projects Fund and the 2026 Municipal Aid Program. Regarding capital projects, the tennis pickleball courts will begin construction this month.
Nice.
That was awarded to Lambert Construction. Have those awarded to Landberg Construction. Plymouth Street and Friendship Road Project is being closed out. The restroom building at Bruno Malini Park will be re-advertised for bid this month.
Nice.
And as stated earlier, the New Jersey Eye Bank Sanitary Soil Improvements to East Summer Road and West Avenue, we received authorization to bid, which is great because our design documents passed the test, the DEP's test, and will be out to bid on Thursday, or out to advertise.
Out to advertise Thursday. And, you know, again, Joe, I want to commend you and Mark de Blasio. Who you work for, but you're our guy here, and.
Three million dollars.
Let me tell you what, that's a hell of a home run. Three million dollars for a little town of Buena Borough to just get this kind of money, to do this type of project. I want to thank you for all your efforts and Mark de Blasio publicly on the sentiments of council. And, you know, it's really something that we're going to be improving on. Mark's firm came in a couple of years ago, and I came on last year. And at one time, when I was here before, we had one engineering form, firm doing, company doing the municipality, the land use board, and the MUA. We've finally gotten back to that piece where we had that continuity within that company to be able to work these types of things out. But I have to say, you know, when I was here before for a long time, I've never seen the aggressiveness to go after this type of money and what's out there like I have with this, with this group of de Blasio and associates. So again, kudos to you guys for really making this a reality. I know it's a lot of hard work, I know Mark didn't sleep a lot of nights, but we're there. And, yeah, on behalf of Mayor and Council, thank you again. And again, awaits a lot of good things to come.
Yeah, this is all because, all because of your firm. If you guys didn't find this, we wouldn't even know about it, so.
Yeah, we would have been spinning our wheels, so.
Being honest, when, when first heard three million dollar grant, we're like, oh, cool, and we're going, this is dope. You know, I mean, no.
We have to pay. We never heard that kind of money.
Holy moly, that's why we let you do the roof.
I need more for the other half.
We're going to get you the other half.
We'll get you that, Pat.
But thank you, in all seriousness, thank you very much.
Yeah, so, good job.
I just have a question.
Yes, any question?
Joe, you finished your report?
Yes.
Is there any update on the punch list for the doors?
I think we're still working through it.
Are you?
I think they came back and adjusted, I know there was daylight that you could see between the door and the, and the threshold.
No payment yet, George.
He just found you three million dollars.
So what?
Yeah, well.
It's not his firm that's waiting for the money, though.
Yeah, that says nothing to it.
It's the outside, yeah.
Yeah, we won't release payment until the punch list is complete.
Okay.
And just for everybody out there, again, who's watching, again, we had. Grant money that was dedicated to the new doors that are here at Borough Hall and.
ADA compliance.
And Pat has really been trying to facilitate, you know, closing to all of this because.
Closing doors, right? And closing the whole.
Yeah. Again, but through her perseverance and working with Joe and Bill, we're coming to closure. And until it's done right, that's when final payment of this council will give it. Until such time, they're going to wait, so. Good job with that, Pat. Okay, unfinished business before Mayor and Council. Any, any new business to come before?
Can I make a comment? It has to do with something personal. Chief is here. So he's been keeping a memory alive for my brother-in-law. He's a Franklin Township fallen officer. He's been doing so much work for so many years. And his team, these professional officers that allows us to sleep at night, they've cleaned our town up when we were starting to lose things here. But we attended a dedication this weekend. We also had a candlelight visual, and this man just lives this and has taken this loss personally.
You had mentioned the officer.
Yeah, and it was Lee Gonzalez.
Former Buena Police.
Resident, was a former.
He was a policeman.
Police officer here.
Out to Franklin, Bill.
He actually lived right down the street.
Okay.
So this man has kept an incredible, my wife went home, and it's her brother. She's the baby of the house. And, you know, she really taken it to heart 30 years after, and.
It's been 30 years this year anniversary?
Yep, this past week, right? This man has, the family, just, we adore this man, the work that he's done with his officers.
Hand up.
And, I mean, he has.
Chief, Chief of Police, Chief?
I just want to give you a shout out. Thank you.
Chief, you want to say?
We thank you, Alvarez, and the candlelight visual that we put together. And then on Friday, we had a very moving ceremony where we renamed Malaga Park, Sergeant Gonzalez Park.
Nice.
And we also worked with the county to be able to name Malaga Park Drive Sergeant Gonzalez Park Drive.
Wow.
The street signs will go up this week, so his name will never be forgotten.
Very cool.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Very good.
I have to say, I went to the police academy with Lee. So we attended Camden County Police Academy back in the 80s. He was with Franklin then, and I was with Buena then.
And I was in the office, and he was on my.
And you were a clerk, yep. Wow. Very good story, very, very moving. Thank you for sharing, and thank you, Chief, for that. Any other new business? Okay, then the next meeting of Mayor and Council will be on May 27, 2025, at 6:30. It's a Tuesday, Motion Adams, second, Barsoya. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting's done, thank you, everyone, for coming out.